Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, September 17, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 9, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata.
Present.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens been excused. Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. San Clemente.
Here.
Mr. Orozco.
Here.
Mr. Moretti.
Present.
And Chairman Nansen.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
(inaudible) United States of America, considered equal for which it stands, on creation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Troply, you might swear it in the profession.
(inaudible)
Approval of minutes.
We have no minutes this evening.
Vouchers?
No vouchers.
Correspondence?
No correspondence.
Wow. Resolutions, case number VA-18-15, DPAC, Donna Sherry.
(inaudible).
Gekway.
Very good.
Got it. Resolution granting front yard setback variance for pool and fence. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Armata. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution's memorialized.
Application before the board, case number BA-16-12, New York SMSA Limited Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless Extension of Time. Application, New York SMSA Limited Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless. Applicant in 399 Route 9 LLC as owner seeking a one-year extension of time for minor site plan approval granted October 24, 2016, to construct an unmanned wireless telecommunications facility on premises known as Block 142, Lot 8, 9, and 10, 399 U.S. Route 9. Miss Dunn.
Good morning. Good afternoon, I should say.
Good afternoon.
Some would even say evening, but I'll go with afternoon. My name is Lynn Dunn. I'm here on behalf of the applicant requesting respectfully the one-year extension of approvals. In the last couple of months, we've had the land use certificate, and more recently, the building permit has been issued by the township. We do, however, have additional pre-construction meetings required with JCPN and the gas company. So, we respectfully request a one-year extension so as to facilitate those pre-construction meetings, and will then move forward.
Okay. Mr. Mallon?
No problem.
Okay. Ms. Beam?
No issue.
Mr. Howard?
No.
Okay. Board?
No.
Any issues? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to extend this.
Motion by Mr. Armata?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call?
One year.
One year. Yep, one year. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next case, case number BA-17-15, Sea Free Plaza LLC. Preliminary final major site plan use variance and ancillary bulk variance. Application of Sea Free Plaza LLC as applicant and owner seeking preliminary final major site plan use variance and accessory ancillary bulk variance approved, approval to construct multi-use office warehouse commercial building with the gross floor square footage area of 24,881 square feet on premises known as Block 169, Lot 1.12 at intersection of Highway 33 and Oakerson Road. This application was partially heard on April 9, 2018, when it was carried to June 11, 2018 with no further notice. On June 11, 2018, this application was carried to August 13, 2018, and on August 13, 2018, it was carried to September 17, 2018 with no further notice. Expiration date, September 30, 2018. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Orozco, Moretti, and Nansen. Welcome, sir.
Good evening.
Good to have you back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thomas J. Hirsch, on behalf of the applicant, Sea Free Plaza. The chairman indicated we commenced this application some time ago, and during the course of that first hearing, there were some questions, suggestions raised about some changes, potential changes to the plan. So, we carried the application, and quite frankly, there were some substantial changes made. We believe all for the better, and we take, we took the time, our professional, to meet with your professional, to speak with them, try to iron out any issues that we had relative to the site plan and the architecture, et cetera. And of course, you'll hear from our witnesses about that tonight. In light of the fact that there's been quite a gap since the first hearing, we'll probably be covering most of the information just to refresh your recollection of what occurred at the first meeting. But by way of general background, this application involves a site that was previously approved by a different owner, but previously approved for just under 15,000 square feet of retail space on a single floor and 2,000 square feet of two-floor office space, which had seven potential tenants. And the application now before you is to, actually, we believe, while it's a bigger building, it's more in conformity with your ordinance in that it has office and warehouse space which are permitted uses, and less tenant space for the commercial, which is the non-permitted use. So, you know, the proposed use is 24,533 square feet. There's 5,900 square feet of a two-level office, 11,536, excuse me, one-level warehouse space, and 7,097 square feet of the commercial space for the maximum of four tenants. So, that was, we were starting with what was approved, and that never got off the ground. This current developer-owner purchased property for their use. They're the primary tenant. Sea Free, they're going, you know, their main office and the warehouse space, which you're going to hear more about, but is mostly to be utilized by the applicant themselves. So, with that general overview, I'd like to get right into our testimony, and I'd like to commence with our engineer, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Troply, you want to swear everybody again?
Yeah, let's swear everybody, Mr. Troply.
(inaudible). Sure, we'll get him all sworn again. All right, gentlemen.
Thank you. Gentlemen, if you would raise your right hand, please swear the testimony of this evening would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so be gone.
Oh, yeah, I do.
Sir, starting with the foreground, may I have your name?
Sure. Michael Simpson, Principal of SOME Architects PC, 65 Monmouth Street, New Jersey.
Thank you. James Higgins.
Very well, thank you.
William Fitzgerald.
Thank you.
Stephen Gattoni. No contracting.
G A T T.
It's, yep, it's Stephen, S.T.E.P.H.N.
Is that what C?
Stephen.
Stephen.
Gattoni. G A T T O N I.
Very well, thank you.
And John Slazik. S.L.A.Z.Y.K.
Very good. All sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hirsch.
Okay, so, Mr. Fitzgerald, we did previously qualify him as an expert in the field of engineering, as our design engineer.
Yes, sir.
Is that okay?
We're good with that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Phil.
She has a mic.
Oh, sure. All right, Mr. Fitzgerald, the site plan that is before the board tonight was prepared by you?
Correct.
Okay. And this plan has, has some changes from the initial plan that we had before the board, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And you've had the opportunity to review this new plan with Mr. Mallon, the board engineer?
I did.
And you've also had a chance to review the plans with fire marshal?
Correct.
And you've also reviewed them with the landscape architect who submitted a report?
Sorry, the board's licensed tree expert, correct.
And our architect also had meetings with Ms. Green, Jennifer, to go over the architectural plan, so I'm not skipping, I'm not forgetting about her, but Mr. Fitzgerald didn't meet with her. All right. Phil, why don't you take us through the site plan as it's now pronounced? We're starting with vacant land, correct?
We're starting with vacant land.
Okay, so go through what the proposal was.
I'll be fairly brief. It's, it's an irregularly, approximately triangular-shaped property on the corner of Highway 33 Business and Oakerson Road and Michael Curtin Lane. It's actually got three frontages, which presents some issues in terms of the design and from which most of the variances or many of the variances and or waivers obtained. You may recall, we proposed a approximately triangular-shaped building last time. We have essentially the same basic shape of the building, except that the new architect has added some architectural interest by way of extensions, appendages, breaks, roof lines as required by the ordinance to eliminate the request for variance or waiver from the design of the building exterior footprint or exterior facade. The parking and layout is essentially the same. The primary and really only access obtains from Oakerson Road toward the south or westerly end of the site. Traffic that wants to, truck traffic or loading or unloading or contractor-type traffic that would be using the warehouse can go straight and then around the functional rear of the building, but it's a front yard because Michael Curtin Lane is a public right-of-way to the south. There is a sign which is not MUTC compliant, but which is shown on sheet three of the plan indicating that truck traffic must proceed that way. Traffic that wants to park either for the use of the offices or use of the commercial space would make a left upon entering the site and go to whatever parking area is desired. At the rear of the site, I'm sorry, I wasn't talking, at the rear of the site. Am I going to hold this? No, it's okay, I got it, I think, I just forgot to talk into the mic. At the rear of the site, we have a number of variances that obtain because Michael Curtin Lane is a public right-of-way. One of them is an outdoor storage yard within a front yard. That area on the previous edition of the plan had been shown as a gravel area. It's been changed to be paved. It is fenced two ways. It's immediately fenced to define its perimeter or its area, if you will, but there is also fencing along the southerly line of the property with extensive landscaping on the Michael Curtin Lane on the outside to help with the waiver from a buffer requirement that we were requesting.
Now, how, how high is, how high are those fences?
Okay, the fence securing the yard is shown at six feet on the plan, but the applicant would have no problem with an eight-foot fence if the board preferred that, but the fence...
Either way, you need a variance for that.
I'm sorry.
Either way, you need a variance for the fence.
Okay. The fence along Michael Curtin Lane, which is the closer one to the right-of-way, we had shown originally as six-foot, but as the discussions we had at the earlier meeting and Mr. Mallon's review letter indicated that the prior approval was required to have an eight-foot fence, so we have now shown an eight-foot fence there. It's a solid face fence with landscaping on the outside.
Okay, now, my, Mr. Mallon, is a six-foot okay on the interior or not? Or does that need to be eight-foot also?
Commercial can be eight feet in the SED, however, can't be in the front yard.
Right, that's what I'm saying. He's going to need variances for both.
No, most all front yard.
Right, he's going to need variances for both.
He will. I think what he's saying is, previous approval required the eight-foot.
That's correct, but...
That's what you're going to continue, but it needs a variance.
I'm talking the interior fence.
Well, it's still in the front yard.
No, I, no, I understand, but do you want it six or eight? What do you prefer?
I think eight is better.
Eight is better.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Applicant has no problem with that.
Okay.
It's really to secure anything that might be in that yard, so it's fine. One major change on this addition of the application, originally in approximate center of the southerly line of the building, we had an actual grade differentiated loading dock, four-foot.
Correct.
That's been removed.
Okay.
Okay, that's been removed, and a large loading area is shown favoring the east side of the building, okay? That is a minimum of 12 feet wide, as wide as 28 feet, 92 feet long, and would permit even a large vehicle to pull in and unload out of side gate or out of rear gate and either into the storage yard or into an overhead door or indoor or man door serving the building.
Okay.
It also allows for access to the recyclable refuse and recyclable storage bins which are placed adjacent to the loading area. One-way traffic.
Can I back up to the eight-foot fence down on the outside perimeter? That's supposed to be slatted, correct?
He said it's a solid fence.
Solid fence, okay.
Board on board, I mean, does the board have a preference as to...
Solid is fine. I would prefer the solid than the slats because those don't generally hold back.
Okay, just making sure.
Okay, so we will detail that. We've called it out as a solid face fence. We will detail it for review, assuming the board approves the application.
Okay. Now, the interior fence could be chain link, correct?
That would be preferred for the security purposes.
Okay.
Okay, so with regard to the circulation for, for large vehicles, it is one-way, okay, from west to east across the functional rear of the building, parallel to Michael Curtin Lane, okay? So, that way, it can, the site can accommodate turning radii for just about any vehicle that could possibly enter the site. With regard to circulation, we've met with the fire chief. I believe I've addressed all his concerns, and in the process of meeting with him, we were discussing Michael Curtin Lane, which is a large, a long dead end for his vehicles. So, what we provided, because it just seemed like a good idea, was if a fire vehicle had to service one of the lots at the corner of St. Michael Curtin and 33, rather than have to back out all the way out of Michael Curtin Lane, we provided a gate with a, like a stabilized driveway with grass over top of it and a knox box so they could actually enter the gate and circulate across this site and not have to back all the way out of Michael Curtin Lane. It also serves for another access to this site should it be needed. With regard to circulation, the other comment that was discussed was increasing the amount of sidewalk across the commercial frontage of the site facing 33, which we've done. It's now continuous sidewalk pretty much between the parking area curve line and the facade, you know, the building, the storefront of the building, if you will.
Now, will there be retail or will that be just a commercial office building?
It's proposed as commercial use. I mean, what would be permitted either in the SED zone? I know when the prior approval was granted for the, it said, for retail, it said, it incorporated all the uses in the neighborhood commercial for the retail side of it on the prior approval, so I think the applicant, because he had no idea what tenants he may get in those spaces, would be whatever would be permitted in the SED zone or in the neighborhood commercial zone that was previously approved.
Okay.
But right now, there are no other, I mean, as I say, he's taken the vast majority of the building. There's no other tenants planned at this point.
Jennifer, if they're going for, for SED, you know, on approvals for that, would, what type of retails are...
It's not.
I know, that's why I'm asking this question.
But that's why they're here.
I know.
So, I, I mean, I don't think we need to get specific as to like, okay, they need to have a restaurant or this or that, but they are here specifically because they're requesting the retail in the SED. The warehouse is permitted.
No, I know that.
So, you know, and I take no exception to it. I think it makes sense. It faces 33, so I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. And then the other thing is getting back to the fire.
Correct.
Okay, how do they feel about the 25-foot road, roadways?
We have that, we have no problem. That's why we, we met with the fire chief. This has everything that he wants. It has the striping, the signage, the radii, the continuous, if you remember, one of the items we discussed was extending the roadway around the building, which we've done as we, just as we discussed.
Okay. They, they, that is a variance, though, correct? Because it's required 30 feet?
Yes.
So...
Oh, I, now I understand. Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, I discussed that with him. I believe there's a letter. He doesn't address the variance.
They did issue a letter.
Okay, but it is still going to require variance.
Right, the width of the drive, of the, within the main access side.
Correct.
Because he mentioned single lane, that's why.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that's in his report of August 28th, your fire marshal's report. He addressed the agreements reached with the applicant's engineer.
Okay.
Okay.
It's in the single lane, but it, it double lanes around portion of the building.
Double lane is 30, single lane, they accepted 20.
It shows 25.
But we have the double lane, he was, he agreed to the 25 when I met with him. That's why we never changed it.
It's 25 on the plan, Jack.
I don't have any problem with it either.
Just as long as it's addressed with the letter.
He just, they just need to address it when Jim gets up to talk about whatever variance relief is necessary.
Okay.
But he seemed to be, issue of, the fire marshal issued a favorable letter acknowledging the varying widths of the drive out, and he was not there.
Okay, I'm just...
I know, Mr. Chairman, that I, I'm not supposed to offer hearsay, but when I met with the chief, he indicated that he would agree to the 25 around as long as I had 360-degree circulation and it was striped and signed properly, which we now have.
Well, he implies it, but doesn't.
Otherwise, we would have changed it.
Okay.
With regard to some comments by your engineer, I could go through the latest review letter rather expeditiously because we have no specific problem with anything in the letter. There are some items on page three and page four, in particular, a list of variances and or waivers, which, all of which are required, many of which obtained from the shape of the site and the fact that it has three, three front yards and no rear or side yards. One or two...
What date is that letter?
That letter was, well, the way it's issued was, it dated November 14, 2017, revised August 31, 2018.
Okay, thank you.
So, rather than rehash everything that's in it, I'll talk to the things that are important, I think. One of them, we had a brief discussion about, and we decided to eliminate the variance, it's B.1. E. front yard setback of the proposed building. Now, that, if we had two minor encroachments into the front yard, they have been eliminated by the new architect, so E is no longer, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's C.
C.
There's a line to it. Okay, that's no longer needed.
That's correct.
With regard to the perimeter buffer at G, I'll note that we do still require that.
Correct.
In that regard, I've, I've handed Eileen a color.
Well, like, Jack, do you have any issues?
I do not. It's interesting, they, they really addressed everything that we talked about on this, and I would like to also state, you know, as we deal with the Route 33 work, the DOT's already done a lot of those improvements, so, you know, the, about the turning lanes and the signalization, they've done a lot of that already, so that takes a lot of the concerns we had under the original application.
Correct.
But they really addressed, they, other than the testimony for the variances, they've really addressed everything that, that we spoke about at the meeting and in the letter.
Okay, so you have nothing really further?
Nothing really, and remember, this was, this was part of the overall concept up at Oakerson when they relocated the road as far as the drainage scheme and everything, so fits, stays right into that same process.
Okay, so all the drainage is, is correct?
Yep.
It's all...
It's all back to when the, was it 2006, I think, is when it was, was done, and that was all laid out with Oakerson and, and all the properties up there.
Okay.
And I would also note, and I know you really didn't get into the landscaping, but Shari issued a letter saying that they've addressed all her concerns associated with the landscaping, and she's happy with the landscaping plan.
Okay, if I may, well, I don't know how you want to proceed. What, we had a little issue with vacation time, so I tried to contact, Shari and I met back in April, I tried to contact her the week before we were getting ready to resubmit to make our deadline for the hearing, and she wasn't available. So, since then, we've worked out one or two minor details, so I'll tell you that the set that you have, the plan set that you have, does not reflect all those details, but I have some small sheets reflecting the September 12 revisions, which she refers to in her letter, where I have a large set I can put in evidence. I just want to...
I think, I think the small set is fine, but it's not atypical for this board to accept Shari working with applicants as a condition of any kind of approval moving forward, so...
We'll get a letter.
She did issue a formal letter saying that he's addressed all of her concerns, and she's happy with the landscaping as is shown on these plans that he's turned, he's handing out.
So, the smaller sets that you're getting now, the last sheet of that just shows the actual landscape that she referred to in her letter.
That's her letter, Shari's letter of, of September 12, that she submitted.
Mr. Chairman, I really don't, in light of Mr. Mallon's statements, I don't have a lot to tell you unless you have specific questions, which I'm happy to answer from an engineering point of view.
I, I'm going to go back to my professionals. Jack, do you have any further?
I, I do not, not from an engineering standpoint.
Okay. Jennifer?
No, sir.
Board members, do y'all have any questions of this witness? In that, the, the grass pavers from, from the roadway end, that's going to be what they call the, the pavers, right?
It will probably be a porous-type stone or a sub-bass.
Right.
The paver-type base that allows the grass to grow through.
Okay.
And I would probably use some type of durable fescue, but let it grow a little long, because I know we were encouraged and we went along with the no-mow, low-mow type seeding for the yard areas.
Okay, now, with the septic system.
Correct.
Is this going to be, that, that paver's going to be just to the inside of that septic system?
Yes, if you, well, it's, it's actually a 30-scale plan, so the paver's actually, the vehicle path probably won't come in within 30 feet of the septic system.
Okay.
And I, there's a fence there also, Mr. Chairman, if you look again on page three, and you were coming into the site from Michael Curtin on that little hatched area, which is the, the stable driveway, you'll see to the right of that is a, is a fence.
Correct.
It's an eight-foot tall fence, so they couldn't, they'd have to go across that fence or through that fence somehow to get to the, the septic area, so it'll be fine. Most of the septic system itself, that's just a disposal bed, most of the septic system system is under the pavement and can handle H-20 loading. It will be designed that way.
Okay. Hey, any further questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, the only things I'd like to make sure we're clear about, I think we touched on it on the first meeting, in the original application prior to ours, there was a waiver granted for sidewalks on the, on the street frontages.
Yeah.
So we're asking for the, for that same consideration, so that's, that's not, you know, dressed one way or the other in a report, it just mentioned sidewalks as a requirement.
Correct.
So we're asking for that waiver of the sidewalks along the road frontages, as was previously granted.
Okay. Ms. Beam?
I had no problem with that at all.
Mr. Mallon?
We, we pretty much in that area have issued the waiver all along. It's not an area where people will walk, they drive to.
And the other item was whether, which is, we'll do whatever the board wants, whether you want the detention basin fenced or not.
I think we had touched on that at the previous, I, I don't see it necessary.
It's not necessary in this particular application.
When we're far away from residential, we don't, we don't put it in.
I, I think we had talked about that at the first meeting.
Very well.
Board members?
All right, that was the only two items, I think, that we were looking at the direction on, in Mr. Mallon's report, I mean.
Okay, anything from the board members?
It's a dry pond, right?
Yeah.
The basin doesn't hold water? It's a dry basin that doesn't hold water typically?
It's not wet pond.
Right.
Right, it's got some infiltration for water quality.
Right.
And then, but it's, the large storms go through or detain properly and then head into the next basin downstream.
It's a detention.
It's on the other side of Oakerson Road, goes across through. Okay, want to move forward, Mr. Curt?
Call my next witness, Mr. Chairman. Call Mr. Simpson, Michael Simpson. John's not here. Thanks. This morning, he wasn't here for the last meeting.
Okay.
This morning, everybody in?
That's fine.
All right, Mr. Simpson.
Do you want to qualify?
Yeah.
Got a question.
That's what I'm going to do. Mr. Simpson, you're, you're the, an architect with the firm that has prepared the architectural plans that are before the board.
That is correct.
Okay, you give the board the benefit of your educational, professional background?
Certainly. I was licensed as an architect in the state of New Jersey in 1985. I've been founding partner along with Mr. O'Neill, who prepared these drawings of some architects' PCs since 1990. We have practiced throughout Monmouth County, throughout New Jersey, actually, for the entire history of the firm. I've been qualified as an architect in probably at least a dozen different communities in Monmouth County.
Okay, we accept your credentials?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Simpson, then, the plans that are, the architectural plans that are now before the board have, are substantially different than the original architectural plans, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and I know you didn't attend it, but there was a meeting held with Ms. Beam to go over the, to go over the architecturals with your partner, correct?
That's correct, yeah, and we spent...
Guy attended also, but...
Yeah, we spent a fair amount of time reviewing that because unfortunately, he had other family commitments he had to go to this evening, but, so we did review not only what was reviewed with Ms. Beam, as well as the conditions and the caveats for the ordinance.
Okay, why don't you go through the, the design as it's now proposed with the board?
In some ways, it is similar to what was proposed before in the sense that there is an office building for Schnell at the southwest corner of the site. That is a two-story building with a gable roof now as opposed to the flat-roof tower-like structure that has been proposed before. We still have a warehouse building separating that from the commercial component that would be along Route 33. At the moment, as has been already mentioned, we do not know who the tenants are going to be along Route 33, so we don't have a specific delineation as to separate tenancies. It could be a single tenancy, it could be up to four, but it's maximum of four tenancies along 33. As part of the, meeting the requirements of, the architectural requirements, we've taken the building and we've broken it into several pieces so that it doesn't feel like it's one monolithic building on either Oakerson or 33, and we even tried to accommodate where we could along Michael Curtin Lane. Technically, as it relates to the ordinance, we could not meet with the building configuration exactly to the letter along Michael Curtin Lane as far as all the articulations along the face of that building, but we did introduce several elements that we feel do articulate the building sufficiently. They include the canopies over each of the overhead doors, as well as the introduction of windows at the upper level of that facade. In the package you have with you this evening, we've included architectural renderings that show the building from all sides, and I don't know if you want to flip to those so you can sort of compare those.
That's not what they're called, because there's a lot of stuff on the thumb drives and you kind of figure out what exactly it is.
Oh, I'm sorry, so on the thumb drive, there's a thing that says present today's date, 9/17/18? No?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We think pretty strongly that the introduction of the gabled roofs with some of the dormers, especially along the Route 33 side, really tend to help break up the scale of the building along that side, and by breaking it into sort of three sections along the Oakerson side, again, it sort of represents itself more like three buildings that have been attached almost in a way that it might have been organically grown over time as opposed to being one massive building across the whole site.
Jennifer?
Are there some technical difficulties with the thumb drives?
Well, I think you all have the color renderings.
But what I would say is that this is a substantial improvement over what we saw when they were here last time. I know they put a lot of time and effort into it. I know it's difficult to tell from the 2D rendering that you had in your plan set, but I agree that it's very difficult along that warehouse to have those articulations. It kind of makes the warehouse not function as efficiently as it should, but they've taken care to change the materials and the colors so it looks like it's broken up. So I take no exception to the architecture or the relief associated with it. I think they've done a fantastic job in making this building look 1,000% better than it did when we saw it the last time.
I agree.
I mean, I think you guys have done a really good job with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It even looks better than the original.
It does. I 100% agree. I just think just changing the flat roof and breaking up the facade creatively, I think, while you're right, it doesn't 100% meet the letter of the ordinance, but I think this maintains the functionality of the structure, but at the same time, you know, takes care to try as best they can to address the concerns that we had the last time they were here.
We were very conscious of the fact you have very different kinds of uses on the surrounding streets, so you do have some places where there's a nice little two-story house or, you know, and then on another face, you have this big industrial building that, you know, corrugated metal or something like that. We don't have any interest in that sort of corrugated metal look at all. We're trying to get something that sort of provides for a good transition in a pretty difficult corner.
Really does look nice.
Okay. Very nice. Okay. Any questions from the board?
I apologize about the technical difficulty. I thought everything was resolved without before bringing it.
We have them all here, so...
Thank you. Well, that's why we brought those, just in case.
Jennifer, any further?
No, I think, I, I think that the applicant has done a great job in addressing the concerns that we have, and I take no exception to the relief, they technically still need relief, but I take no exception to the granting of it.
Okay, now, that's just a waiver relief, correct, or variance?
It's a waiver.
Wait, okay, Mr. Mallon? Mr. Mallon?
I echo exactly what Jen said. I got to compliment, actually, I compliment both the engineer and the architect. They, they kind of listened from the last night they were here, and...
Well, we gave them a hard time, believe it or not.
In a similar way. They, they listened, and it makes the review much easier when they really come in with a plan and they talk to our staff people there. Makes it a bit easier.
Correct.
Will there be any medical offices?
I can't speak to that.
Again, we have no idea what tenants we might attract. Right now, we need no parking variance based on Mr. Mallon's report.
Well, I, I, if I'm, the retail doesn't cover medical, does it?
No.
It would be, what would be permitted in the SED?
Well, that's not permitted in SED.
Well, then, I, if it's not permitted, then it's not permitted.
Yeah, I don't want to overstep Matt's bounds, but...
No.
We've always in the past, you're going to get approval for retail, if you come in with something that's different and you can't match the parking, you're back here. And parking, we do that even if you have a tenant, then the tenant moves out, you bring a new tenant in. If, if you don't match the parking, you're back, just so you know. It's, because we understand when you redo and change tenants and things, parking is the key.
Yep.
Okay?
Mr. Howard?
That's, that's exactly what my review is going to be. If it's permitted in the zone, I'll double-check parking, it'll look at the entire site. If it doesn't match, you'll be back. If, for whatever reason it does, then you, you got approval.
Well, it'd be based on tenant then, at that point.
Right, I mean, you have a max of four tenants, so if there's some playing around with square footages and it works, it's happened before, but usually with an increased parking standard, you usually wind up coming back.
We understand.
Okay. Mr. San Clemente?
Looking at the color rendering, the next to last page, I'm trying to figure out where this...
This is, this is the back.
Yeah, the fence, fence ends?
At, at the point when we did the architectural rendering, we had not seen the final engineering plan, and so the question of whether it was a solid fence and where exactly it ended, we didn't know. So I'm being very frank with you, the rendering is a quote, "artist conception" based on something we didn't have an answer to. So the fence has to comply with what the engineer has represented. We can change the rendering and I can resubmit that, but...
Mr. Mallon, doesn't the fence go all the way down?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's very typical in these renderings for it not to be 100%. The idea is to give you an idea of what the building's going to look like, you know, sometimes there's extra trees, sometimes there's people walking, it's really just an illustration of what the building's going to look like. The engineered plans really handle the rest of that stuff.
Right, yeah, the fences on the site plan are what we're bound with.
The fence is here, all the way to here.
All right, okay, yeah, because it shows...
It goes way on down.
Okay, thank you.
If I'd shown the fence as the final engineering plan showed, you'd never see the building.
Yeah.
We, we thought maybe it was a good idea for you to get an idea of what the building was from any perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? CNN, Mr. Hurst?
I have no further questions of the architect at this point.
Call your next witness?
All right, thank you. Traffic engineer and fellow, okay. Our traffic engineer was at another meeting, Mr. Nag, Mr. Ray, I mean, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I, I spoke with Mr. Ray, and that's why I related when, when we had discussion on it, that a lot of the items that were required under the original application and this, the DOT's already taken care of, so the, and really, our question is really out on Route 33 and the signalization. That's right, that's been addressed by the DOT, so there, there really is nothing in an Oakerson Road, in and out, we've, it's no different than what we had before.
Well, the, I, I was on the board at the time of the original in 2006. And I, I remember it was a very extensive traffic.
Yep.
That was dealt with the, the original application, and just looking at this application versus what was here before, this is a step down, you know, as far as trip generation.
Absolutely, but, but...
That I feel.
But some of the items that we looked upon, I make sure I'm on...
I know, the, the turn, turn lanes.
The outside, Route 33 and the collection, and a lot of that signalization's been taken care of by the DOT.
Right.
That's why I just want to understand.
Well, they've added lanes, turn lanes, and everything else.
Yes, turning lanes and the, and the signalization of delays and things, that's, that's all been done by the DOT and finished.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why we hoped that, that had all been addressed, all those concerns, because even in the, the original one, it said, it asked the applicant to see if the DOT would agree. If not, the approval was still good, but here, DOT, in fact, has done all that work, so it's everything they're asked for.
Right, I know, there's turn, there's turn signals, there's turn lanes now, you know, it, it's not just...
Yep.
A red light and a green light anymore, they're, they're actual arrow signals, so...
All right, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Higgins, okay, we qualified Mr. Higgins before.
I, I know, but just...
Did you like me too?
To keep the record clean, we'll, I, I know Mr. Higgins for 20-something years and I, you know, but we still have to do it each record.
I only say it because he was quali... Oh, you didn't testify the first year?
No, I didn't testify the first time, nope.
Mr. Higgins, you, would you please give the board the benefit of your educational, professional background?
Sure, I have a Bachelor of Science in Landscape Architecture from Rutgers University. I have been licensed as a professional planner for approximately 40 years in the state of New Jersey. I'm still currently licensed. I've testified before several hundred boards throughout the state, including this board on numerous occasions, testified before Superior Court, and I've been recognized by the Supreme Court as an expert in professional planning.
We accept your credentials, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Mr. Higgins, in preparation for your testimony tonight, can you tell the board what you did in preparation of that?
Well, I reviewed the prior resolution of approval, I reviewed this application, I reviewed the expert reports, I looked at the master plan and the zoning ordinance and visited the site on a number of occasions, and I was also involved with, but didn't testify on the original application back in 2006. My daughter Allison actually did the testimony then. In fact, it's, it's come now, I am known as Allison Coffin's father as opposed to her being known as Chip Higgins' daughter.
I, I think of it that a way, that, that's your daughter.
She never owed you, though.
No.
All right, Mr. Higgins, you've gone through the, the board planners' report, board engineers' report, so can you identify the variances, and I don't know if you want to start with the D variance?
Yeah, I'll start with, I'll start with the D variance.
And go through exactly what the nature of those are, and then give us the basis for your opinions related to same.
Sure, okay, well, the prior approval was, as Mr. Hurst said earlier, approx, a little bit less than 15,000 square feet of retail space, and the uses that were permitted were any of the uses that were permitted in your neighborhood commercial zone. The application, this application actually reduces the amount of retail by, by around 50%, down to 7,460 square feet of retail space. The number of spaces originally approved were seven, what's, what's permitted, what's contemplated now is no more than four. So there's a substantial reduction in the, the amount of non, of uses that are not permitted in the zone that are now permitted on the site by virtue of variance. But in addition, this application does increase the percentage considerably of uses on this site that are permitted in the SED zone. You have approximately 67% of the building would be occupied by uses that are permitted in the SED zone, and 33% would be occupied by the retail uses, yeah, by commercial uses, yes. The site was described to you, the zoning is SED, I think you understand that, that's been described to you. I think the issue is to get into the D variance that's required for the retail spaces, for is to get into the D variance that's required for the retail spaces, for the commercial spaces. And it's important that in the SED zone, the purpose of the zone in their master plan is to provide for a variety of economic opportunities in various areas of the township where rail and highway infrastructure is available. That's what you have here. You do have a variety of uses being provided on this one site, which I think is important. More importantly, the board previously found that the site was particularly suited for the commercial uses. And for the reasons that the flat topography of the site and the ease of access, the triangular shape of the site, and the visibility from three streets, really, it's two streets that it's really visible from, because the street behind, the old Oakerson Road, really is not one that's very heavily traveled. The building, the finding at the time was that the building is attractive and will be able to serve the whole township community by providing retail services in a convenient, at a convenient local level. In this case, the building is even more attractive. So, I think that finding still holds. And the use will not be a major traffic generator. In this instance, the traffic generation will be reduced substantially because of the fact that the retail uses are being, or the commercial uses are being reduced substantially. And that, again, the master plan envisioned a variety of economic opportunities in this zone, and you do have a variety of economic opportunities in this site. There's nothing regarding the surrounding land uses or the nature of the proposed development that would change any of these conclusions of the board from 2006 with regards to the particular suitability of the site. And as has been discussed earlier, in fact, the nonconformity with the zone is being substantially reduced by this application. Again, the magnitude of the deviation in the ordinance has been significantly reduced by this application, and the proposed building is more attractive than the previously approved building. So, based on that, I think that the board can grant the D variance for the commercial uses, and that there will be no substantial detriment to the surrounding properties. The surrounding properties are a mix of uses also in this area. With regard to the C variances, five of them, I think, are related to the fact that there are three front yards on the site and that there's a hardship. First of those would be the outdoor storage in the front yard. You can't put storage anyplace but in a front yard on this site. And the uses, where you have this on the Michael Curtin Lane, was, is the best location on this site, because there really is not much behind that that can view this site. We have Oakerson Road, and you have Route 33. Those are very heavily traveled roads. Michael Curtin Lane is not. The accessory structures in the front yard, again, you have to have, you have all front yards, so there's no way not to have accessory structures in the front yard. And again, looking at the surrounding uses in the area and where most of the accessory structures are, I don't think there's a substantial problem there. The 50-foot perimeter buffer, if you applied that 50-foot perimeter buffer around the site, you would have very little land available on the site for development. In fact, this variance was previously granted in 2006. The off-street loading in the front yard, again, you have to have the loading in a front yard, looking at the site, there's no other place to put it. And where it's been put is in the front yard that is least visible from surrounding properties and on the street that's less traveled, and it is adequately screened. So, I don't see any problem with those. The other variance was for, one of the other variances is for the width of the driveways as required for fire access. And again, the driveways are constrained because you do have three front yards, and that pushes everything in on the site. The fire marshal has looked at it and has felt that what's being provided here is adequate for fire access. And in fact, as Mr. Fitzgerald discussed, there is an additional access being provided from Michael Curtin Lane to the site that would actually improve the ability of the fire department to serve this site if there was a need to. Other variances that are necessary, there's a variance for multi-tenant structure, with the structure would have to be at least 40,000 square feet with minimum 5,000 square foot spaces. That's intended to be geared towards larger warehousing and industrial operations. In this case, the warehouse is over 5,000 square feet. And the other uses that are proposed, our uses, very often would have less than 5,000 square feet, particularly the retail spaces. So, I don't see a major problem with that. Again, I don't think there's any substantial impact on the surrounding properties, particularly when you look at the function of the site and the attractiveness of the building. Sidewalks on the street...
Jim, before you go on to the sidewalks, when we talk about the multi-tenant building, I would perhaps recommend, right now, the warehouse is a single tenant, correct?
That's correct.
The warehouse and the office is a single tenant, correct?
I think part of the office space is a single tenant, and I think part of the office space will be written out.
The office space is a single tenant.
Right.
The principal, this developer, the two owners of that, Seafree are also the owners of Schnell Contracting, which will be the tenant there. The warehouse space, they indicated, I think at the last hearing, we got to it, that they would leave open if a tenant in one of the commercial spaces wanted to take a piece of, some of the, to store some stuff in the back, then they would lease some space to the tenant. But generally speaking, right now, it's only going to be the single tenant, and most likely will only be the single tenant, the owner. But they would reserve the flexibility to lease some of the space.
Well, that's kind of what I was getting at. I would say perhaps you should request that in the future, if some of that warehouse space is to be used by a tenant other than the sole tenant, that that would be codified in that variance as well. I mean, warehouse space is warehouse space. I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, exactly.
But we have this weird requirement in the ordinance because the building is a certain size, it can only be a single tenant. So, I don't want, if, in the event that that happens in the future, I don't want you to have to come back here for another use variance, or you might as well request it now, even though that's not the plan currently, because I would take no exception. It doesn't change the nature of the application, and it just, it would just make it easier and cleaner in the event that something happened in the future.
Yeah.
Same for the office.
And, you know, we felt that it was just warehouse space, it would just be part of the lease, but I appreciate Jennifer's comments, and that would be the intent, that flexibility, which would make sense. If a tenant needs to gate in some space, why not? It's the same square footage of rental, I mean, of warehouse space. So, yes, we would ask that that be included, that flexibility was part of the approval.
I think it's a good idea, because we evaluate the application in that regard based upon the availability of parking. So, whether it's a single person using the warehouse or four people using the same amount of warehouse space, the parking requirement is the same. It's just for this unique requirement that we have in the ordinance. But, so that's, I would recommend that that be codified in the resolution so that they don't get hung up later on.
Okay, and that's not necessarily going to be the retail.
No, but let's just say, the business that's using the warehouse today decreases in size. Not that I'm wishing that on anybody, but in the event that that does, and they want to lease out the balance of the warehouse to someone else, they don't have to come back here for relief because we have this provision in the ordinance.
So, okay, I just wanted to clarify, it's just not for the retail.
No, I would just say that, you know, and the same situation goes for the office. Same thing, the office parking is calculated for office parking, whether it's split between two different businesses or it's one business. So, I would just make that request, Ron, if you could codify that, just because, you know how quickly things change, and getting before the board is a process, and if it doesn't change the parking, which Matt would check anyway, I just would like the relief to be, you know, we're here, he's testifying, and the justification is the same.
Then if they do, just hear me out. If they do decide to let, say, the upper story of the office to a different company.
Right.
Okay, they would still need to follow through with the CO and everything.
Correct, and then Matt would make sure...
Do you understand that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I just want the variance to cover that potential, because I know that that's really not how we initially looked at it, because that wasn't, not how it was proposed. But you know how things change moving forward, so I would just make that recommendation.
And that makes sense, because this is a unique site, and the building is a unique building. And I think that relief would be justified because of that. And then the only other variance that I can see is the variance for the fence height. That was previously granted, and it's necessary in order to screen the loading areas and the storage areas from surrounding properties on the site. And again, because you do have three front yards, there's no way to avoid that.
All right, so I think you covered the fact that there's parking within the buffer area, and that's, that was one of the ones, in the loading area, all because we have no rear yard, we have no side.
That's correct.
Those variances are all related to the same issue.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Higgins, do you want to address the waiver as far as the building facade, you know, the breakup on the back side of the building?
Surely, again, that's the least visible side of the building. And again, you have the constraints on this site in terms of how big a building you can build, because you do have three front yards and three 50-foot front yards. And if you start jogging the building in and out on all three sides, you lose square footage of the building, which really isn't necessary, because this side of the building isn't that visible. And it will be heavily landscaped.
And as Ms. Beam indicated, would affect the functionality of the warehouse.
That's correct.
The size of this.
Ms. Beam?
I think the only variance that you have left to talk about is parking.
In the case, there is no parking variance. In Mr. Mallon's report, because of the credit or something, the way it's calculated.
The board has the ability to reduce the parking requirement to eliminate the variance, I think, by 20 spaces.
Well, yeah, under H, 1H, B1H, it says 56 spaces are proposed, 70 are required.
But I think...
Waiver allowed up to 20% reduction, therefore, variance is not required.
But I think the board's going to need to just hear the justification.
Yeah, I'm just going by what we see in the report.
Yeah, I think when you look at this site, first of all, the retail spaces do face Route 33, but the access is coming off of Oakerson Road, off of Route 33. So, the retail spaces, or the commercial spaces, will be appropriate there, but I don't think they're going to be spaces that are going to generate a heck of a lot of traffic on and off the site or parking on the site because of that. They're going to be, I think, more to types of spaces that are going to be specialty-type shops.
Ms. Beam?
Yeah, they have.
I don't have any, I don't have a problem with the parking. I just wanted them to put testimony on the record, that's all.
Is that satisfactory?
Yes, it is.
It's the waiver of the 20% reduction, I guess, is what Mr. Mallon indicated, is the report was seeking the board to approve that waiver for that reduction.
Yes.
Mr. Mallon, you have any further?
No, no comments.
Ms. Beam?
No, I take no exception to the testimony. I agree with Mr. Higgins in that this is a less intense use that was approved here prior. I think they've done a fantastic job with the architecture lending itself to a desirable visual environment. I think this is an efficient use of land, and as such, I feel that they've met the prongs for the use variance.
Questions of the board, Mr. Higgins? CNN, the only thing I have is the Environmental Commission report. We just addressed, there's comments? I think it was just the EIS, just the updated EIS report.
I'm just... I'm giving Mr. Fitzgerald a copy of the report.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could just jump in?
Yes, please.
You know, this had a prior approval on it, at which time, everything was thoroughly vetted. This application is less intense than what was previously approved.
Oh, I, I was going to address that, but just the updated impact, environmental impact?
There's no resources on the site.
No reason?
I don't, I don't see the need for it. I mean, there's no wetlands on the site, so I, you know, and I think all of those things that they have discussed, like pesticide use and things like that, that was addressed at the prior application. So, I don't see the need for it.
I'm just addressing it.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
And then, as far as the historical pesticide, that was farmland at one time.
Right.
There hasn't been any issues that I know of.
Nope.
From the other construction sites.
And normally, you test pesticides when you put residential in there.
I know. So, okay, we're good with the environmental impact. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, any...
That's the only, that was my last witness planner.
Okay, any questions from the professionals of any of the witnesses, or any further comments?
No, no comments, no questions.
I just want to, again, put on the record that I appreciate the hard work that the applicant's done. It's taken a lot of effort on their part, and you can see by the tenor of the hearing that, you know, it's made a substantial difference in the review of the application.
I, too, will reiterate that also, because, you know, we gave them a hard time the first time, you know, the first night they were here, and they addressed everything that was stated. So, any questions or comments from the board at this time?
Is that four units going to be separated, or can you, can I make a contiguous unit?
It could, it will be no more than four tenants. It could be less, it could be one, two. You know, in other words, the space, you know, I think we indicated it would be no less than 1,800.
Roughly 1,800 square feet.
I think the planning, no less than 1,800 square feet, no less than, no more than four tenants. So, there could be less, the space could be bigger, if somebody wants to get two units that are...
So, that can be done if you want to expand.
Well, it's not expanding, it never expands the total amount, right, but it could be one tenant, could be four, no more than four tenants.
Right.
Could be two, three.
Just out of curiosity for us old folks, is there going to be an elevator to get to the top floor?
You mean, the office space, the second floor, the retail's not?
Oh, okay.
Only the developer's office space is two floors, that's the only thing.
Okay.
No, there's no other commercial space that's two floors, only the office.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions from the board?
Okay, at this time, can I take a motion for questions and comments from the public?
Motion to open to public?
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Armada, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anyone in the audience wish to come forward to ask questions or make comments of any of the applicant's witnesses? Please come forward. CNN, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close?
Motion by Mr. San Clemente, seconded by Mr. Armada, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Hirsch, do you like to make a closing statement?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments of your engineer, Mr. Mallon, and your planner, Ms. Beam, in terms of the effort that the applicant put in. And we appreciate their assistance in working with us and our professionals to try to get the best plan we could in front of the board, and we appreciate the board's patience. But I think the application now speaks for itself. You've heard the opinions of the experts. I don't think you need a long-winded formation from an attorney right now. So, I will rest with that and give it to the board.
Okay, thank you. Professionals, any further comments?
No, sir.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Members of the board, we have seen a vast improvement on this application from the original presentation. So, meeting all our requests, looks like that they have met just about everything. So, I am going to make a motion to approve this application. Now, let's see if I get these all right. There'll be an eight-foot fence on the inside and the outside, there'll be retail on 33, the roadway 25 feet, and the fire marshal has approved. The waiver on the sidewalks along the road frontage, there's a waiver on the building design. The commercial retail use will be on 33, that will be allowed. There'll be the storage on Michael Curtin Lane, the accessory structures, 50-foot buffer waiver, off-street loading, the multi-tenant, so you'll have the multi-tenant use for anything that comes in the future, the building facade waiver and the parking waiver.
Have a motion?
Oh, yeah, solid fence on the outside.
Michael, and waive the parking, a waiver on the parking?
Yeah, I said the way, yeah, waiver on the parking.
Good job. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Armada.
Our professionals' advice to the applicant was taken in the right spirit, and you've covered everything that our professionals advised and required. So, good luck.
Thank you very much, sir.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armada?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Herman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time, patience, and cooperation.
Okay, at this time, the board is going to take a brief. Is it good?
Mr. Chair, before you break for the recess, I just want to point out that the next application, BA 18-02, Robert and Dolores Kowalski, will be handled by Mr. Cuchero and Mr. Miller, and I will be stepping down from the dais as I am in conflict in this particular case.
Okay.
I wish you all a good evening, and I will see you the next time.
Mr. Cuchero, I have one board member I would like, before we adjourn for a brief bathroom break, he might have a conflict also, and I need you to rule. I don't want to keep him here through the break to dismiss him, so he could put on the record if that would be okay with you. Actually, you could come right up to the table there. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I could speak to the board member during your break, so that when we come back, you know, that way I can have a little time to think about it.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what is the conflict?
The conflict is the representative lawyer is my personal lawyer.
Then I don't have to think about it that much, you have a conflict.
Okay. Give me the excuse, sir. Okay.
Mr. Nansen, he's also my attorney. But I don't have a conflict.
I'm sorry.
So, the representative realtor is my personal realtor also.
You had me, he's my lawyer.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. O'Donnell uses Mr. Well, Mr. O'Donnell uses Mr. Chaplin also.
I also use many lawyers.
Well, it doesn't matter how many lawyers you use, as long, well, let me talk to Mr. O'Donnell during your break to get a better handle.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, board recess for ten minutes.
The zoning board will now reconvene.
Okay, our next case on the agenda, case number BA eighteen dash oh-two, Robert and Dolores Kowalski. It's a use variance case, application of Robert and Dolores Kowalski, his applicant owner seeking a use variance with both variances to continue use of property for roofing business, which has been, which has been in use on the property since nineteen ninety-one. Interior storage of materials in one residence on premises known as Block Two Twenty-Nine, Lot Six, Twenty-Six McGill Road. This application was originally scheduled for May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, when it was rescheduled to June eleventh, two thousand eighteen, with new notice. On June eleventh, the application was rescheduled to September seventeenth with new notice. Expiration date, September seventeenth, two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Chair, just before we get started, just by way of housekeeping, we do have two members who have accused themselves, so I just wanna note that for the record. Eileen? It was Mr. O'Donnell...
And Mr. Moretti.
And Mr. Moretti. We, we do have at least one absence tonight. Counsel, if you just wanna enter your appearance?
Good evening, Alan Kaplan, law firm of Kaplan Book Line, you're here in Howell representing the applicant.
So, Mr. Kaplan, you can see we have six board members tonight. You do have the right to, to have seven if you wish, you need five if you were to get an approval tonight, so, we're prepared to move forward if you want to, if you would like to...
We could also have Mr. Mertens listen to the tape.
Yes, you, well, if we don't finish, yes. That's, that's correct, so, but it's up to you.
Can I have one moment to discuss the clients?
Just, just a minute. We'll address the notice after this.
There's no way we're gonna get through this tonight.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but it's not gonna happen. We're not gonna get through this tonight. No way.
What was, what was going on in the last one, November?
Route Nine Hardscape, a use variance.
Uh, thank you, uh, we're gonna go forward tonight.
Okay, sir.
And we may not finish tonight, but if, and perhaps we'll have, we can defer as to whether or not we wanna wait for Mr. Mertens to listen to the tape and vote.
Okay, also, Mr. Chair, by way of housekeeping, we do have at least one other attorney here tonight. I know there is an argument concerning the adequacy of notice, I think this would probably be the best time to have any other attorneys enter their appearances, and if there's objections to the board's jurisdiction, to place that on the record now.
Yeah, I just, I, I also wanted to say that we're gonna go till ten o'clock, and, you know, so...
Okay.
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 Thank you.
Mr. Kaplan, you may have a seat.
Thank you.
And you, you know the mics in the middle of the table there.
Uh, my, my name is Bernard Riley, I'm appearing from the firm of Gazarovski and Halabenco, which is representing Mr. and Mrs. Clapp, who are the owners of the next-door property, and we have a number of objections, but I would like to put on the record my threshold objection, which is that the notice is clearly defective and misleading, actually, it's actually misleading, and that I don't think the board should hear the case at all without the notice being proper, and I'll, I'll just summarize really what my, my problems with it is. The notice indicates that, uh, this is going to be for the continued commercial use for storage for a roofing contracting business in the existing storage buildings. Now, the problem with that is, one, that would imply that this was a legal use, and all that the applicant is doing is trying to continue what was a legal use, and there's some technicality. In fact, this use has been going on illegally for a number of years. It has no legal status at all, and the notice in and of itself, any, uh, average layman looking at that would be under the misimpression that somehow this was legal, and all they wanna do is continue a legal use, which is clearly not the case. Secondly, the, the application actually requires two use variances. One, a roofing contractor operation or any type of similar use is not permitted in the zone. It's the, the AR-three zone, it's residential zone, not permitted. So, that's one use variance. Two, there is a residence on the property, so the applicant is looking to put two principal uses on the property, being the residence that's there, that's a rented residence, as I understand it, and this roofing operation, which has been going on illegally for a number of years. Two use variances are required. The notice doesn't tell you that two use variances are required, it only references one use variance. So, that is another defect. The third defect is, there's no notice, there's no, nothing in the notice about a number of C variances that are required. There are a number of setback variances required, uh, which are not in, not referenced at all. So, an individual, a layman, looking at that notice, would think, well, there's no problems because it meets all the other regulations. Doesn't say that it doesn't meet all the regulations, that there are a number of setback variances required. So, it, again, this leads the average layman, that this is something that's there, it's been there a long time, it's continuing, there's nothing else wrong with it, what's the problem? The last defect is that, well, let me make one other point about the setback variance. The setback variance, and this actually, I can't really blame that on the applicant, the setback variances are listed in the engineer's letter, and they are referencing setbacks for accessory residential uses, like a garage, or said, for a house, which are only about ten feet or so. And they say they need a variance because the setback for an accessory structure in residential use is ten feet, and they only got five or seven or whatever the numbers are. The fact of the matter is, they're asking for principal uses. You would have to measure the setback from a principal, a second principal use, which in that zone is thirty feet. So, the engineer's letter is inaccurate in that regard, and secondly, all these variances with the correct numbers should have been in the notice. So, the notice is clearly defective for numerous, those three reasons. And, and, and there's no reason to go forward with a defective notice. I mean, I, in certain sense, I'd like to go forward with the notice defect being there, and then you could hear it, and then at the end, we could have a court overturn the whole thing, which doesn't make too much sense, from your point of view, you'd have to hear it again. I respectfully submit that the notice is clearly defective. Oh, the last point I'd like to make, I'm sorry, I knew I forgot something. The last point I wanna make, if you read it, the notice, it says they're gonna do for storage for a contractor's roofing business. That's not what's going on here, it hasn't been going on for, they don't, they store stuff there, but it's an operation, it's a contractor's yard. His employees or his crews come in in the morning, they load up their materials, they use it as a yard, they make all the noise, it goes with an active construction yard or contractor's yard, and then they go off, and then they come back in the middle of the day, get more stuff. It's a contractor's yard, it's not just their storage facility. Again, what that would infer to anyone looking at it, well, it's just a storage facility, nobody comes there because it's just a storage facility, or maybe they come there once a week, but this is an active construction yard, and the notice is misleading in that regard. So, there are at least four factors that indicate to me, anyway, that this notice is clearly not only insufficient, but deceptive. And the first thing, rule of any of these cases is, the notice has gotta be sufficient and informative to the average layman. He's gotta be able to read that notice and understand what's going on there, and that notice doesn't tell him. So, I would respectfully submit that really, the notice should be ruled as inadequate, and this should be carried to allow for renotice.
Mr. Riley?
Thank you.
Mr. Gazarovski's letter, I think, had one additional point in it that you didn't hit, and I don't know if you wanna raise it concerning, I think there's a portion of the drive aisle that, for a very brief period goes...
Well, that's, that's actually another point, the driveway, uh, I'm not so sure if it's too much on the notice, but it's, it's...
Well, if it's not, if you don't think it's on the notice, then we'll deal with it later.
I'll, I'll leave that out, I think, I, I've said enough about the notice.
All right. Mr. Kaplan, you have any response?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Kaplan, you may sit.
Oh, thank you.
You may sit.
All right.
Thank you.
This, uh, application's notice was previously set forth, this is on, right?
Yes.
Okay. It was previously sent out, Mr. Gazarovski objected to it originally, it was revised. When it was revised, it was reviewed by your board, uh, conflict attorney's office before it was sent out and was approved. I believe it's more than adequately notifies people. It surely brought Mr. Riley's, or Mr. Gazarovski's client, and made him aware of what was going to be asked for. He's here, he's obviously here to object. So, when you say that it fails to put the average layperson on notice of what's being requested to go on here, is misleading and factually incorrect because they're here. Those people, they are here, they're here objecting. Now, the other thing is, apparently, there was a letter sent by Mr. Gazarovski complaining about these defects. He called me today. I told him I never received his letter, he said he sent it to me by email, I asked him to send it again, he didn't send it. Board does it, but I don't have it, I was never sent it, I've never seen it. And he knew that, and he still didn't send it. And I believe that the notices are sufficient to alert the public as to what, what we're doing and what's going on.
Mr. Cuchero?
All right, uh, Mr. Chair, so, in no particular order, the objections that were raised, first I'm gonna deal with the allegation that there are C variances that are necessary that are not part of the notice. It's a case called Palio, the North Brunswick Zoning Board, which states that when you need D variances relief, if you actually don't need C variances, the C variances are subsumed within the grant of the D variances. So, I don't find, as a matter of law, under the Palio case, that there is a necessity to itemize the C variances, and the rationale in the Palio case is that those C variances are for uses that are permitted in the zone, not for uses that require D variances, and it's part of what you would, you know, you can look at that and say, this is what we normally require in the zone, and you can look at it in terms of positive and negative criteria, but the Palio case says you really don't need them as independent C variance relief. The objection that the inclusion of the statement that there's a use there already that's continuing is sort of just a factual statement, it doesn't say that it's a legal use. Yeah, I'm, for this, I'm not the common layman, but I think a common layman might look at it and say, they got caught by somebody. Not that everything's okay, but they've been doing this for a while, and they've been caught, and they need relief, but it doesn't say anywhere in this notice it's a permitted use. In fact, the notice states that they need use variance relief, so, I don't think that that's a misleading statement or a statement that would render the notice defective. The, the number of D variances, that's probably a closer one, however, the notice goes into some detail about what's going on, the fact that it's not a permitted use on the site, that it does need D variance relief. It doesn't make any statement that it doesn't, that it's a permitted use. So, I, I think it probably is enough, uh, the language in the notice, that, you know, the use there is not, is not permitted. So, when Mr. Riley talks about the common layman, it's, it's true, it's, it's, does the notice possess enough information? Not that the common layman knows everything, and the case law says that notice is not substitute for attendance at a meeting, it's whether the layman could derive enough information from the notice to make a decision as to whether they wanna come to the meeting, whether they wanna look at more information at the zoning department, and I think this notice, you know, has enough information concerning the fact that it needs D variance relief, that it may even, if necessary, need site plan approval, what's going on on the property, that the common layman has enough information where they could have made a, a determination as to whether they wanted to come to the hearing or wanted to get more information from the, from the zoning office. So, I think that the, the notice, from a legal perspective, contains enough information to, to give, to vest this board with jurisdiction to continue tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, you know, obviously, you know, Mr. Riley's objections are noted, you know, for the record and preserved.
Thank you.
The, the board will move forward with the case.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaplan, uh, you have witnesses that you...
Yes, I do.
...swear in? Bring them all up and swear everybody in? Mr. Cuchero, you wanna...
Okay, if you could all just raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Michael Geller, G-E-L-L-E-R, I'm the applicant's professional engineer and professional planner.
I'm Robert Kowalski, Jr.
I'm James Kowalski.
Robert Kowalski, senior.
Mark Krupnik, I'm a real estate broker.
Torres Kowalski, owner.
They may not all testify, but this way they're all sworn. Okay, thank you, sir.
Um, actually, just one more question, Mr. Kaplan. When I did read the notice, it stated that you'd be seeking a use variance, and there was like slash appeal. When I looked at the application, it was just an application for a use variance, so there's no seventy-eight appeal that's tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, we're ready? Okay. All right. This is a, uh, not your ordinary application, usually, you're coming, people are coming in for these use variances, um, and they're not engaged in this situation. This is, you'll see the testimony here today, and I'm gonna get into it really briefly, but it's a situation that's been going on for about twenty-five years on a property that had a commercial use variance. And you'll hear the testimony as to what transpired and what was in existence and what's, what's there now. So, let's just get right into it.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to call our engineer, Mr. Michael Geller.
Thank you. There's a mic right in the middle of the table there, if, if you wanna pull it, yeah, pull that closer to you.
Okay, oh, that's nice. Michael Geller, G-E-L-L-E-R, I'm a partner in the firm of Geller, Siv and Company. I have forty-three-plus years of experience in the field of engineering, I've been a professional engineer since nineteen eighty, professional planner since nineteen eighty-three. I'm also a certified municipal engineer, which I've been since nineteen ninety-one. I've appeared before this board in the capacity of both an engineer and planner for applicants for close to thirty-five years on the private sector, and I was employed by the township of Howell in the early eighties as their engineer and planner as well.
Educational? Educational?
I went to Stevens Institute of Technology. I graduated there in 1975. I'm a lifelong resident of New Jersey.
We accept your credentials, objector, checking attorney?
No questions.
I'd like to first mark the exhibits, if we may. I have several, and they're all, Mr. Howard has them on a jump drive, and I also have reduced copies for the board members.
Let Mr. Posh come down in.
Okay. What number do we have two on?
A-7.
Do you, Mr. Riley, do you have these, or do you need them?
Yeah, we need them, I don't have them.
Okay. Do you have some extra copies for Mr. Riley?
Absolutely do.
I assume A-1 through 6 are the site plan and so on?
Yes.
Okay, you can give me a list later, if you don't mind, or if you have it.
A-7 is the aerial photo, stated 52118, prepared by Geller, Siv &amp; Company. It's basically a Google map-
There you go, Mr. Riley, I'm sorry.
...and depicts the outbound of the site in question and the immediate area. The next exhibit will be a photo exhibit. It was photographed, a series of seven pages, including the title sheet. They were taken by myself on April 2nd, 2018, and there's a series of 12 pictures in there. It's entitled "Photo Exhibits: How Township Board of Adjustment Case Number BA-1802, Use Variance for Robert and Dolores Kowalski." That would be A-8.
The whole packet will be A-8, correct?
Yes. And one more will be a package of three plans that are on a full-size rendering, they're reduced in size. They're the minor subdivision plan of tax lot 7, 8, 9, and 10, block 229. It's a copy of a file map that was filed in November of 2013, and that's the adjacent property to our west. The second page in that exhibit is a plot plan and septic design for Lot 701, block 229, dated October 6, 2014. That's for the property at the corner of McGill Road and Asbury Road. And the third exhibit in that package is a plan entitled "Master Plan Proposed Clapp's Family Farm," tax lots 7.01 and 7.02, block 229, dated March 1st, 2016. Do we have them all?
No, I don't.
What, do you have it, just the aerial?
I don't have any.
You have nothing? No. There you go.
Mr. Geller, do you have enough for the board?
Yes, I do.
You're representing what lot and block?
I'm representing Clapp. The, it's one of the exhibits he just put next door.
7.02?
I think it's 7.01.
7.01.
7.01.
The adjacent property, I think the exhibit is marked the site, the property right over here.
Okay, but, does your-
Just for the record, if I may correct him?
Does your client own 7.02 also?
Uh, yes, they were subdivided at one time, now they're together, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, they're both owned, they were subdivided, apparently, in 2012. My client purchased both lots, and so now he owns both lots.
Okay, in 2012.
Well, he bought them, he bought it in 2000, it was subdivided in 2012 by the prior owner. He purchased the property in 2014, and then he built his house and the Clapp Family Farm, as it's described in one of the exhibits, is his property.
Hey, I was just trying to get clarity-
That's fine.
This is, this is a farm?
Okay, first, I'll, I'm leaving, A-7 is the aerial photo up, that shows the existing site.
Just before you get to that, Mr. Riley, have you had an opportunity to take a look at the exhibits?
Yeah, I don't object to them.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Geller.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The lot in question that we're here for is known as Lot 6, block 229. It's an irregularly shaped lot. It's narrow in the front, gets wider in the back as you go from south to north away from McGill Road. It's on the northerly side of McGill Road. It's approximately 550 feet east of the intersection of Asbury Road, which is County Route 547. It's immediately west of a Conrail freight line, immediately abuts the property, and then further to the west is open space and electric power lines, overhead electric power lines. The site contains about 6.86 acres. It's situated in the AR3 agricultural rural estate zone. The northerly portion of the site does have freshwater wetlands, and in that wetlands there are two ponds and an intermittent stream. The wetlands have been delineated, they're shown on the variance plan. That's part of the record already, which is A-5. And the variance plan does show that wetlands, and what's estimated to be a 50-foot transition area once we do go to DEP. The wetlands are located within the limits of the wooded areas on the site. So, all the used areas on the property that are currently unwooded are outside of wetlands areas. The property is occupied by several buildings. First, there's a one-story, single-story frame dwelling in the southeasterly portion, near the front portion of the dwelling, of the property. And that building is shown on the plan, it has a height of 18 feet, more or less. That was there since about the 1950s. There are two one-story buildings in the middle of the property in the rear. They were formerly chicken coops, they were then used as a dog pound and kennel, which I'll get into in a moment. And they are actually what's being used currently for storage of the Kowalski Roofing Business material, all inside those buildings. One, the front one is about 4,128 square feet, and the rear one is approximately 6,039 square feet. There's also a one-story dwelling immediately opposite, I think it's easier if I put A-5 up, which is the variance plan, to see these things. There's a garage immediately opposite to the west of the existing dwelling. That garage has been there since about the time of that dwelling, looks like, about the same age. And that one-story accessory building is 686 square feet. It's general use for non-business-related, that's basically residential type of storage. And the height of, to the midpoint, is about 11 and 1/2 feet. There's also a very small shed located near the dwelling. It's about, oh, it's very small, it's about 10 by 8, about 90 square feet, and it's nine and 1/2 feet high. It's like a big doghouse, almost. And then, there's a structure in the rear, that's a combination of containers with a flat roof overhead, and that's behind the roofing business storage buildings, that has an area of about 1,232 square feet, and that's actually used for stores associated with the roofing business, has an open front, and the building height's about 17 feet.
How high?
17, 1'7". The site is served with a paved driveway access off of McGill Road. It's a two-way driveway. It's paved for the entire distance to about 80 feet past the dwelling, then the pavement stops. The drive is then a circulatory rotation in a counterclockwise. It's a one-way drive around the back buildings, and then around the northerly side of the front structure, and then back to that driveway out. The parking that exists on the site exists behind the rear building. It's an open field, it's gravel, stone surface, and that's where vehicles and trucks that's owned by the Kowalski Roofing Business, when they're onsite, are parked in that area. Most of the time, the trucks are off-site at jobs. It is noted that many times, or most of the time, employees of the roofing business actually report to the jobs. They don't come to the site, they go directly to the jobs, and basically, the times I've been there, there's been nobody onsite. I met with Jimmy Kowalski, that's one of the sworn witnesses. He's been there as an owner, he's there once in a while, but basically, it's not a man's site. There are no visitors or customers-
Mr. Geller?
Yes?
Just on that, are you saying that that's something that is normally the case, or are you saying, making a stipulation, that as part of this application, the workers would never come there, they would just-
No, it's normally the case. It's rarely that they do come.
So they do come sometimes?
Sometimes.
Okay.
But not the usual. But there are no visitors or customers that ever come to the site, ever. That's a stipulation. The site is served by a drilled well and a septic system that serves the residents in the front, and there's a drilled well and a separate septic system that serves the rear buildings.
Mr. Geller, on the septic systems in the rear, is there, was there ever Monmouth County approval on those?
I'm not aware of Monmouth County approval, but we do have a letter from Monmouth County Board of Health as part of the review of this plan, which has no objection to their use, as long as there's no expansion of what's there. That lends me to believe that the Monmouth County does have some record on that. They wouldn't just say that without having some indication of the history and operation of the septic system.
Okay.
Mike, can I just clarify something that you said earlier about the employees?
Yes.
When you say it's not a man's site, you mean that the employees don't remain on the site all day? They clearly have to come there, right, to pick up the equipment, or the material?
Not usually, but when they do, they may come to the site and then go off to the jobs. They're not there all day.
That's what I mean, but they do have to get the material, right?
The material, a lot of times, are drop shipped directly to the location-
Directly to the customer?
...where the roofing job is done.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'm confused. I mean, you're saying there's storage of materials on site.
Right, that's the-
Those materials that are stored on site go off-site to the work locations, right?
Yes.
Well, then who takes them there, if the employees rarely come to the site?
If I may, if I may, you'll hear the testimony, but answer your question to get it past this point. Normally, what they'll do is they'll pick up the materials at the roofing supply place-
With all due respect.
...and bring it right to the site.
I don't think he should be answering the question. Maybe this witness is not the appropriate person to answer the question, but a witness should answer the question.
He stated that it's going to be testified to, but he's giving us a preview as to what that future testimony is, I think.
I agree.
Yes, and offer of proof. My witness will testify that, at most, at most times-
Mr. Kaplan, if you have a witness that's going to testify to it, we'll just wait for the witness.
Yeah, we'll wait.
Okay.
Let's move forward. But Monmouth County is aware of both septic systems?
Yes, they are.
Okay. What about both wells? Are they aware of both wells?
Yes, they are, because they actually had one re-drilled by Pickwick Well Drilling, the rear well, was re-drilled recently, that applicant can give you-
Mike, I can't hear a word you're saying.
The applicant can give you better information on the date that Pickwick Well Drilling drilled the rear well.
Okay, and they had a permit for that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This site was purchased by the current owners in 1991, and was occupied immediately at that time for this operation. Before their purchase, the use of the property, what had been a dog pound and kennel, it was owned and operated by Community Dog Control, Inc., for which a use variance approval was obtained from Howell Township in May of 1966. There's actually a resolution-
Mike, can I stop you there?
Who are you stopping? Who's stopping?
Matt.
Matt.
So, you had just said that a use variance was issued in 1966?
Yes.
So, the resolution that I provided is for a use permit. It had a variance for insufficient frontage, but in 1966, in the industrial zone, you needed a use permit even for a permitted use. So that wasn't a variance, as it was permitted at the time. Just a bit of clarification there. Speaks to the history of the commercial use of the property, but it technically was not a variance.
Okay.
Yeah, back then, it was-
A use permit for any permitted use in the zone.
Correct.
They still had to come to the board for a use permit.
Correct.
Excuse me, it does say on page four, now therefore be resolved that a variance be granted this applicant.
The variance is for the frontage, the insufficient frontage. If you read on the first page, it very clearly identifies what the variance is for.
Also, I think-
And it's hereby granted for the use of these premises-
Well, can I, can I just interject also? So back, this is pre-MLUL, back in the 1960s.
Correct.
There was no municipal land use law. There is Municipal Planning Act, I think, I forget what it was called. But back then, the zoning boards didn't actually even grant the variances. They made recommendations, and the governing body did it. But I don't know that, you know, for purposes of what you need tonight, that it's, you know, highly relevant. But there was a review in any event, you know, by the zoning board.
Thank you, Ron. Bob?
If I may just make an objection to the testimony about what was there before this individual bought the property in 1991. Unless there's some foundation about what he knows and how he knows it, I'm going to object. You're just spouting that this was used-
Noted, objection noted. Mr., I think Mr. Geller did testify that that's what he was reading, 1966, a use permit was issued.
Well, I understand, but then he said up until the time 1991, it was used as some kind of dog kennels.
Well, I don't think this is an objection. I think these are things that you can ask in cross-examination, and the board can give whatever weight it deems appropriate to the testimony.
Okay. Mr. Geller?
Yes. Actually, the history that's recited in the resolution that I referred to of the zoning board talked about a hearing in 1962, with denial in 1963, an appeal in 1964, then finally in 1966, on April 14th, the board heard and found certain facts that were applied. The application, the applicant was found to be a door warden for 40 municipalities in Monmouth and Ocean County, and his plan was to rebuild a one-story masonry building, that's the 6,000-square-foot building, the rear of the two buildings that I previously described, that had previously been used as a chicken coop, and he was proposed to remodel that, soundproof it, and air-condition it for kennels, and that there would be masonry dividers and cyclone fencing for the different kennel spaces. There were, he testified, also the resolution found that there were four half-ton pickups to be used for the operation, that the soundproof building and no dogs would be outside, that 50 persons per week would visit the premises, that dogs were loaded on and off of trucks, which can drive into the building, there were large overhead doors which still exist to this day, and the zoning officer authorized, was authorized to issue a use permit, so I stand corrected, Mr. Howard, I apologize, and other permits accordingly. The resolution was adopted on May 12, 1966.
Okay.
So that was the use of record at the time that the Kowalskis bought the property. They moved into the property and basically continued the commercial use of the rear portion of the property.
They did not use it as a dog kennel, then?
No, they used it as a roofing business.
Okay.
So, and from a zoning perspective, at the time when this dog kennel was considered, and up until 1989, the zone was an I-zone, which at that time was the industrial zone, is the predecessor of the current SED zone, and in 1989, there was planning, master plan reviews going on, and that zone was changed to AREE3.
In '89?
In 1989, so two years prior to the Kowalskis purchasing. But they were purchasing it as the dog kennel, and they moved in, and for whatever reason, they did not get a certificate of continued use. The area to the east of the railroad, that's to the bottom of A-5, previously was also I, then it was rezoned eventually to AREE6, so the railroad is dividing line between AREE3 and AREE6.
Okay.
As you review the vicinity of the site, and I'm going to go back to A-7, I'd like to review the uses around the site, and some of the other non-residential uses in the AREE zones. To the north of the site are residential properties that front on Asbury Road, they're in the AREE3 zone. Several of them are undersized, but that's really not relevant here. Also, to the north of the property, east of the railroad, north, further to the north is the Jersey Coast Fire Equipment Site. I'm going to describe that in a minute. To the west of the property is the railroad right-of-way, JCPN overhead power lines with the second transmission line that was recently installed a couple of years ago. And then there's vacant properties in the AREE6 zone. To the south, across McGill Road from the site, is an active farm field, and to the west- farm field, and to the west of the property are lots 702 and 7.01. 702 immediately, it blocks the site, and 701 is the lot on the corner. I'm going to refer to A, I think it's A9, A9. That property was the subject of a minor subdivision, going back to 2012. It was ultimately filed in the Monmouth County Clerk's Office in November 7, 2013. It created two lots conforming to the ARE3 zone, and they were designed for residential use and were by the previous owner prior to Mr. Claps, which was Greg Capuano and Jerry Grasso. They filed the application and received the approval to create the lots. On that plan, at the time that it was reviewed, it was noted that that property to the immediate east, Lot 6, Block 229, was commercial, used for Kowalski Roofing. The second page in that exhibit is the plot plan for Lot 7.
Mr. Geller?
Can you repeat that, what you just stated?
About the fact that the subdivision plan noted the adjacent use as Kowalski...
Who granted the subdivision? Was that a planning board?
Planning board.
So, the fact that the planning board recognized that there was a particular use, what significance does that have? It wasn't a determination that that use was permitted, was it?
I didn't offer that, Ron. I'm just saying that on the plan, it's required to note the adjacent properties, and we typically note the adjacent uses, and it was noted on that plan as Kowalski Roofing.
All right.
It was there at the time. The corner lot, Lot 701, was developed as a residential property on a plot plan and septic design for Lot 701, Block 229, in October of 2014. Ultimately, the house was built, and there was a limit of clearing around the proposed dwelling and the driveway and the septic, and it was a limited, clear limits, and that was designed, and then it was approved by the Howell Township Engineering Department, as is the norm. Ultimately, the house was built and occupied. And then in 2016, Mr. Claps approached us. He was in the process of wanting to develop farmland, and the, I believe it was either the Township Engineering Department or Code Enforcement that required the development of a plan to show the ultimate use of how the farm was going to be developed. I believe he was going to use both lots. I don't think they were ever consolidated, although I'm not sure. I think they were never consolidated. And Lot 701 remained residential. There was a barn put in the back. There are several pastures and corralled areas for animals, an arena area, and there was a large amount of clearing that was required, as well as the retention of a 30-foot buffer adjacent to Lot 6. And that was required by the township. We did that. We never had any further involvement with this, other than a conceptual plan, as mandated by the Code Enforcement Officer, for whatever reason that they required it. And we did that. And that's just given to you as informational, it's all informational for the adjacent property. Any questions?
Mike, the applicant, or the objector's proposal is just the last one for the farm, correct? Or it's the house and the farm?
Separate times. 2014, they proposed the house.
Right.
2016, they proposed the family farm.
But on both of those plans, there's no indication that Lot 6 is industrial, correct?
On the plot plans, typically not, no.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Geller, for the history again, the lot for the applicant, that was SED at one time and then changed in 1989?
Yes, it was industrial. Before it was called SED, it was called industrial.
And then in 1989, it was changed to ARE3?
ARE3.
Okay.
And this... Going back, I just want to describe the other non-residential uses, if I may, in the ARE zone in the immediate vicinity. On McGill Road, number 69 McGill Road, that's to the east of the property on McGill Road, is allied environmental signage. It's about 1,000 feet from the subject property. It's in the ARE6 zone. It's a allied environmental signage. I really don't know what they do unless whatever environmental signage is, but it's a...
It used to be the central truck and terminal.
So, it's non-residential, and I believe it was approved as a reuse in the ARE6 zone. In 95 McGill Road, that's further to the east on McGill Road, there's a business known as SWI Service Works, the Integrated Security Professionals. That's 700 feet from allied signage, and that's in the ARE6 zone, and there are pictures in the exhibit, photo exhibit, of all of these uses. There's actually a stone parking and circulation area that was approved for that. To the west of the site, across Asbury Road, the north corner of Cranberry Road, that's Jersey, that's the Shore Oaks Golf Community. The industrial buildings for their maintenance yards are situated at the immediate north-westerly corner of Cranberry Road and Asbury Road. That's, I believe it's in the, it's in a special zone. It's the RRC.
Recreational?
Recreational residential cluster zone.
Okay.
To the north, Jersey Coast Fire and Equipment is located at 377 Asbury Road. That's on the south side of Asbury Road. It's just immediately west of the railroad tracks. Of interest on that, there's also a residential dwelling that occupies that site, along with the Jersey Coast Fire Equipment Business. It's in a, like a storage type of pole, bull barn type building. And then further to the east from that, on the east side of the railroad, there is X-Tec Building Materials, which is in the ARE6 zone, and that's immediately east of the railroad on the south side of Asbury. So those are other non-residential uses that are in the vicinity of this site and in the ARE zones, except for the golf course buildings. This application, and I don't want to jump to conclusions here, but the, I believe that the use variance for this site is warranted based on the history of the zoning in the area, and the prior use of the property as an industrial use, and the history, the history of the use itself. The current application, as a result, as I understand it, of a Code Enforcement violation notice, that the current use is not permitted in the ARE3 zone. No argument there. Current application requests the approval to continue the historical use of this property. It's, since 1966, was approved to be a mixed dwelling and residential, dwelling and commercial use on the same property. It's different. No argument that a dog pound and a storage for a roofing business are two different uses, but nonetheless, it's not residential, and not one of the uses permitted in the ARE3 zone. This application proposes no new building construction. There's no site construction that's proposed as part of this application. At the time of the current surveys that were done, and the wetlands delineation, back to A5, if I may, the wetlands were delineated, 50-foot buffer, because actually, when we did the subdivision for the Lot 7, that had a 50-foot buffer. We presumed it's a 50-foot buffer. Only DEP can classify and assign the buffer width, but we noticed that there were certain equipment and vehicles parked in that area, and as part of this application, those vehicles would be relocated outside the 50 feet. We show an area on the plan that's about, I'm going to measure that, just to get it right. It's 30 by 110, but there's actually a little area behind that that's outside the 50 feet as well, and that, everything would be moved out of the 50 feet buffer. In fact, I believe there was a DEP inspector from the Toms River Compliance and Enforcement Office that visited the site. He was just checking on it. I guess he got called by the adjacent owner, I'm not sure who, and he was very pleased with the site, but we'll produce a letter from that inspector to the board's satisfaction. And so, as part...
Are you going to revise the plan to show this additional area? And like, what is the surface of that area? Is it just dirt?
It's, actually, there's stone from where the, it's pretty much stone, and there's been some grass overgrown, the stones.
And you're storing vehicles in that area, correct?
Yes, some.
So this board typically requires any area that is going to store any type of vehicle to be concrete?
Concrete or pavement?
Confirmed with my client. The applicant would be good with requiring any storage areas to be concrete surface that are going to be parked on by vehicles?
I can't hear you at all.
Maybe it's the microphone.
You have to hold it right in the...
Hold it closer.
Oh, yeah, I usually do, but okay.
There you go.
All right. The applicant does agree that any areas that are for storage or parking of vehicles or equipment would be concrete surface?
So can you revise the plan and provide the board with exactly where that's going to be located?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Would that increase in impervious coverage mean that there has to be some sort of stormwater management analysis, and maybe, you know, some sort of engineering for stormwater management that's associated with the plan?
Well, we either could ask for the minimus exception for that small amount of increase. We're well under the permitted percentage right now. The lot impervious coverage is at 9.2. The allowable lot impervious coverage in the ARE3 zone is 12 and 1/2. We would have to look into that as far as whether stormwater management is necessary, or it's a relatively small area, and it can't be...
Are you trying to say that just because you're below the permitted impervious coverage, that you would never have to do any storm, I mean, I don't think that...
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that upon review, it could be looked at what the change in runoff character is.
Okay.
And we can do what needs to be done. I'm not offering that it doesn't not need it just because it's...
But you've got to look at water quality, more so than volume.
Got it.
If you're going to store vehicles that could have drippings, and you're going to put it on concrete, you've got to do something to collect it for the water quality.
Especially considering if wetlands right behind, you don't really want it running off into the wetlands.
How many vehicles are you talking about?
Well, current, I don't have that number right now.
Okay.
The plan shows 11, correct?
Right, 11.
Yeah, but some have been eliminated since that plan was prepared. That plan was based on the survey that was done. I know the applicant has already moved the vehicles out of the buffer, and I think some of the numbers have been reduced, and we haven't revised our plan accordingly, so we'll have to do that. And just to summarize the use variance we're asking for is, we're asking for the use variance to permit a use, that is, the roofing business aspects in a district that's restricted against that use, that being the ARE3 zone. Also, the planner and engineer have pointed out that a D1 use variance is also required for two principal uses on the same lot, that being the existing residential dwelling and the storage aspects of the owner's roofing business. We offer that that was considered when the board considered the industrial use of the pound, that there already was a dwelling on the site.
Mike, the zoning changed. You yourself put testimony on the record that no certificate of nonconformity was ever received, and it wasn't a use variance, as we already went through. It was a use permit for use in an industrial zone. You're in an ARE zone, and that, by the way, predates my life, since I'm only 47 years old, so you're going to need to put some testimony on the record to justify the uses. I'm sorry, that's just not going to cut it.
We'll testify. Let's continue.
I don't want to go.
Let the carrier, let's continue.
Until 10 o'clock. I figured it... Let's just continue. We might be testing. Okay. We're going to continue with Mr. Geller's testimony after other witnesses testify, so he can have a factual basis to make his, address of his statements.
Well, just...
I just have a few...
Go right ahead.
Questions for Mr. Geller here. Also, I know probably before 702, the lots on 702, 701, 702, before they were purchased, they probably weren't farms, but now you're dealing with the farm on both, you know, on that site. You're going to have to address farmland buffer also. Whenever, I know we're not going to finish tonight, but you're going to have to address that. And there are structures that are too close to the property line, period. And my main one is the roof over, you know, storage containers, you know. Y'all need to address that. Something's going to have to be done with that. Not all of this we can deal with with the farmland buffer, because like, the chicken coops, those pre-existing, you know, they were already there, period. They've been there from 1964 or '66, whatever. Those we can't do too much about, because that predated the farmland buffer. But, you know, storage containers and things like that, usually a storage container is a movable object that can be moved. It's not a permanent structure. So, you know, stuff like that's going to have to be addressed, because I know the board doesn't favor going in, and I know you know me, too, you know, I don't favor interrupting the farmland buffer. But, you know, if things could be addressed, this really in that buffer, that could be addressed, I would like to see it addressed. And Mr. Sam Clemente had a couple of questions.
Back to these dates. So, this property was previously an industrial-type use from the 1960s up to 1991. And in 1989, the zone changed from industrial to ARE3. And the owners purchased the land in 1991.
Correct.
So, how could they have this business going when the zone was changed? And what happened in 1990?
It was, it was the dog pound kennel was continuing in operation. They'll testify. Till they sold it to, sold the property to the Kowalskis, and the Kowalskis just changed the use to a less intense use.
But an unpermitted use, nonetheless.
Yes.
So in 1990, it was still the dog kennel?
Yes.
And then in 1991, ownership changed?
Right. In fact, they bought it from the dog kennel company. Whose exact name I have to read, was Community Dog Control, Inc., was the actual owner and operator of the kennel.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Geller did testify to the, to the access drive that goes to this use, but I don't remember you stating that it, for some period of square footage, that it goes on to Lot 7.01. Can you just go back and go into that a little bit?
Yes, I will. Good point. There's a corner, it's actually about a driveway easement to Lot 6. It's about 48.46 square feet, and it's the very south-easterly corner of Lot 702. At the time that Mr. Capuano and Grasso were before the planning board, the planning board engineer cited...
Bugger, did a mic, please, Michael.
At the time that the applicants were in front of the planning board, the board noticed, the board engineer noticed that there's an encroachment of the driveway from Lot 6 on to, well, it wasn't Lot 7 at the time, but proposed Lot 702. And they asked what's going to be done with that encroachment, and the owners granted that easement for that driveway to continue in that location, understanding that they wouldn't need to reconstruct the driveway, and granted that easement to occur.
Please.
wouldn't need to reconstruct the driveway, and granted that easement to occur. You were the board attorney at the time. So that's how that was created, and that's how it's remained that way since the subdivision was filed.
And I know you may believe I remember every single application in its entirety, but I don't have a, sort of a ringing recollection.
Mike, do you have the easement? A copy of the easement?
I don't have one with me, but I know that if it got signed by Mr., the township engineer's office, there's no way that Mr. Savino would let me go by without filing a deed. I'm sure there's one on file, yes.
Okay.
It's on the file map as well.
If you don't mind, could you produce that?
If I have it, I will. If I could just comment on that. I believe there is a deed of an easement. However, my comment to that would be, that was for what would have been a legal use. It wasn't for this type of use. And so if he wants to overburden easement, he would have to go back and renegotiate with the present owner. So I don't think-
I feel that if it was an easement, it's easement.
Well, actually, so there's case law on this. I don't know if either counsel is familiar with the Goodfellows case? So-
Well, yes, I don't.
The Goodfellows case dealt with a situation where the applicant needed an easement to deal with drainage on the property. The applicant had not secured that easement, but when it went in for its, well, they were seeking preliminary approval at the time. Board denied the application because there was no easement in place. The court reversed the board, finding that that actually should have been a, if they were going to, if they could have approved it because it was engineered properly, then the obtaining of the easement should have been a condition of the approval rather than a reason for denial. I think the board needs to be aware of that, that we're not really here to adjudicate what an easement permits or doesn't permit. If the applicant is representing that there's an encroachment onto the neighboring property, and they believe that the easement permits it, it may be that the objector does not believe that the easement permits it. We are not the chance redivision. We're not gonna-
I agree with you. I don't dispute that.
Okay. Well, let me just, let me just finish. So if the, and look, I think we're long ways away from making a decision. But if there's a positive decision, that would be a condition of approval, that they're gonna have to demonstrate that, you know, that's an easement that they have. And it may be that these parties go to court or renegotiate it or something. But the objector agrees, it's not something we're gonna evaluate, you know, here, as the board.
Mr. Kaplan? Is there any other people, any questions for Mr. Geller? Any other questions? Jennifer?
Um, can we talk about the storage areas on the site? Can you provide some testimony on how that complies or doesn't comply with Section 18820?
You're gonna have to refresh my memory on 18820.
It talks about materials or waste which may create a pollutant hazard, or it has to be enclosed. So are, this is storage area, all of it enclosed? Is it not enclosed? How, what goes in there?
First of all, anything that's stored is indoors. It's either in a container or under the structure or in the buildings. Storage areas on this site are parking of equipment or trailers or trucks.
So then I guess I'm just not understanding, then I'm just not understanding the plans. Why then would you need a roof over containers if they're enclosed?
The open, the front is open-faced, but otherwise it's an enclosed structure. There's no outside storage, none.
Well, it says container storage. I mean, that's outside. And that's not where the roof is, right?
Oh, those are, those are, those are containers. There's containers in that area.
They're being stored there, right? That's storage. I have to say, I feel like these plans need to be revised. Because I, there, it's just so vague, and I just don't understand, like, where these things are going, and if you're widening up the area that they're gonna be relocated, and, you know, is the roof just the hatching, or is it, there's an existing concrete pad? What is that being used for? You know, it just seems like it's just vague, and I have, I'm having a hard time putting my hands around.
Well, see, part of that, part of that was my instructions that that, they're gonna have to address that because, number one, it's in the farmland buffer.
Right, no, I understand.
And I do know, they make kits that go over the top of containers. It's open on both ends, but it covers the container itself. They, I, they do that. I have one myself. But the thing of it is, you know, I keep hay in mind. But, you know, the hatched area, I gather, is the roofing. You know, everything with the roof.
Yes.
And you got outside containers that are just open containers, storage containers, that are just laid on the ground, correct?
Yeah, they're not open, they're contained, but they're-
I know, they're shipping containers.
Yes.
Okay. But I do understand what Jennifer is saying. You know, it really needs some clarity.
I mean, and I, I feel particularly strongly about this, given the fact that the plan is dated December of last year, and my letter is dated April. So there has been ample time between the review letters being issued for these plans to be revised and updated. I just, you know, I feel like lately we've been seeing applicants constantly coming here after a prolonged period of time, and like, revising the plan on the fly when there's ample opportunity to give the board an updated plan.
These applications-
I mean, was a perfect example was the application before this.
Correct.
So I mean, it just seems like it's consistently happening, and there's really no reason why it couldn't have been, the plans couldn't have been revised before they came in.
I'd like to, are there any pictures in here of this container situation we're talking about? I'm not seeing it.
I'll show you that. It's on page, page four.
Right here. Page four.
Page four, the bottom picture on the left. There's a truck in front of it, but that shows that roofed area.
Okay, I see.
And then there's the containers that are to the right of it.
Okay. What, the roof in between them? That's what they load and load stuff when they bring it out of the storage. And it's out of the weather when they load.
Oh.
That's, this is not very clear. It's a dumpster.
Just, if you can, can you just revise your drawings? But I already suggested that you need to address that one anyway, so.
Got it. You know, we were prepared to proceed in May, and we've been carried because of the objector's attorney for several months, so I'm not using that as an excuse.
Now, question on the residential-
It wasn't because of the objector's attorney, but we're not gonna get into that.
No.
It wasn't our fault, that he didn't notice.
Let's move forward. The residential, is that occupied?
Yes.
Is it occupied by one of the owners?
Uh, no. It's a tenant.
Not at this time. Not at this time? Is it a rental? It's a rental. Okay. And they've had inspections, CO'd, and they're registered as a landlord. That was my next question for the businesses. Have they had COs or fire inspections? They've had inspections for the, every time they changed tenants, they got a CO. No, I mean, for the business. The barns, fire inspections? I don't believe they've had annual fire inspections, no. The garage directly across from the residential unit, next to 702, that, is it, what is that being used for? I think you testified that that was-
It's not business-related storage, but it's other storage, residential related, residential nature. And the applicant will have to describe, I'm not sure what's in there.
Do you have any idea when that structure was built?
I believe it's from the same time as the dwelling.
The dwelling.
From the 50s.
Okay. Mr. Kaplan, would you move forward? I would say we call it right now. We're about eight minutes after 10. Okay. And I wanna address my professionals real quick. Do you have any other information that you would like to see before the next meeting? Revised plans? I know-
Another one of the questions that was in my letter was about clearing. Like, was there clearing done? I know that the chicken coop has been there forever, but where all the storage of this stuff has been, has that been cleared? Because we have a pretty strict tree ordinance here, and significant fees associated with clearing trees. So I would like to know whether that was done or not. And then I think Mike put on the record the height of the building. So as long as the plans get revised and the clearing is addressed, I think I'm good. What about you, Jack?
Mr. Mallon?
Yeah. We will. Covers it, the relocated storage. Obviously, if they're gonna place it on concrete, they need to address the water quality.
My question also is, when was this map? What's the date of this map?
May 21st, 2018.
Okay, so, May 21st. If there's any way, does your map show the containers that are over on the site?
My plan shows my-
I know the plans do, but does your aerial map show that?
When you blow it up, you lose detail, but there are certain- There are certain structures that show up, but they're kinda blurry. They don't show the containers.
But you, that was-
As you can see, this is actually before 2016, actually. This is-
Yeah, I was gonna say the-
The lot's still wooded and-
The corner house there is definitely not.
Yes.
Yeah, this is, this is well before 2016. No, no, that's the date that we prepared it. We based it on a Google image that might be from like, 2015 or so.
Would you mind, is this from their application?
No, this is Google.
This is Google map. Can you please revise your maps right here? At the next meeting, please, as an exhibit? Because if you look at your aerial here, there's been a considerable amount of clearing back there versus-
Since 2016, that collapsed family plan, that's what they did.
Yeah, but there's no barn on this, there's no fencing.
Yeah.
Very different.
I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about the property here.
Correct.
I don't care what they did.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm making a date comparison.
The purpose of this plan, Mr. Chairman, was to show you the uses in the vicinity, not necessarily the detail-
I understand.
Of the site when we've issued detailed surveys of our property.
Okay.
With all due respect.
Any other from the professionals?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the other thing, the way we're going, we're looking like we're gonna probably need a site plan.
I kinda have a feeling-
I mean, the application wasn't for that. But I think with the relocation and stuff and things we're doing, we're probably gonna need a site plan.
I'll let Mr. Kaplan address that with your client. If it would be possible, if we could bifurcate that with the use variance. Because, you know, to go to the additional expense on the site plan and don't have the votes necessary for the use variance, you know, throwing good money out the bag, you know. Mr. Chair, you have an issue with doing that?
No, it's their, it's their right. However, the bifurcation is not like a black and white issue. The board still has a right to get as much information as it believes it needs to determine the use variance. But I think we just need to place on the rec, like I said, I don't have a legal objection to it, but they just need to place that on the record, that it's now a bifurcated application.
Okay. I think, Mr. Geller, you have your homework done to do. And don't, please don't forget the easement. It would be nice to have that part of the application at this time.
I made a note.
Thank you. Other than that, do you have a date?
Mike, how much time do you need? My October 15th meeting has four applications currently scheduled. November 5th is five. November 26th has Route 9 Hardscape. December 10th has two applications scheduled, and December 17th has one.
Okay, the Route 9 Hardscape. Go on that date.
Okay, that's November 26th.
Because they've stood us up before.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
And I'll need an extension of time, Mr. Kaplan?
Be granted.
You could put it right on the record if you want.
We'll grant the extension. Thank you. That's November 9th, right?
November 26th.
November 26th.
Mr. Turkey.
Hold it. Yeah, November 26th.
That's the last Monday in November.
Right.
We need the extension, I will?
He got it, she got it.
Got it.
Got it?
I gotta find my paper here. Okay, case number BA 18-02. Robert and Dolores Kowalski will be carried to November 26, 7:30, with no further notice. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Before, we've gotta, I think we should establish when we get the revised plans.
Yes.
At least two weeks, I think, two weeks before the meeting, at least.
At least two weeks before the meeting, please.
And the week before this is Thanksgiving week, so-
And then before that is League of Municipalities.
And the week before is League of Municipalities, so.
Really needs to be in the beginning of November.
You have a problem with that, Mike? Yeah, I only have one.
What date?
Sir?
November 5th.
The beginning of November, if you don't mind.
Try.
Okay, yes, sir.
No, no, I was just-
Okay. And could you please include counsel, objecting counsel?
I'll do that through my counsel.
No, it's, that's my address. Thank you. Okay. Any further business of the board? Further business from the professionals?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, zoning board can have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Ramada, Secretary of Homeland Security Roscoe, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Zoning board adjustments adjourned 10:15.